I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of Baraboo to order for Monday, January 23, 2012 with roll call. Mr. Borghenhagen.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McNeven.
Here.
Mr. Mearing.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Mr. Bedro.
Here.
And Vodak here. Continue with the pledge. Flag behind the screen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to continue with a motion that have been resolved. The Board of Education approve the minutes of the January 9, 2012 meeting as printed.
I'll move second.
Motion by Borghenhagen, seconded by Cummings. No discussion. Hearing none. Those in favor of the minutes as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carried. Brings us to correspondence. I have none. Any other board members with correspondence?
Yeah, I have one piece of correspondence from Representative Fred Clark. I was at a listening session with him a couple of weeks ago talking about our testing, ACT Plan and Explore, and he responded to that meeting and also was looking for the hope that we could have more bipartisanship in our legislature. So, that's my only correspondence.
Any other board members with correspondence? Administrative correspondence?
Hi, the thank you. A special thank you to the Baraboo School District from the Sauk County Children's Giving Tree. Thanks to the generosity of our staff and others in the community. We had assisted 308 families. 781 children received food, toys, and clothing. This is the 27th project that they've had going in our community, and they would like to extend a heartfelt thanks. Pass that around.
Thank you. Any other administrative correspondence? Hearing none. I'd like to move on to public viewpoints. Is anybody here for public viewpoints tonight? Any public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing none. On to staff and student recognition, and for staff and student recognition, I'd like to turn to Dr. Ritzenthal.
Tonight, we are honoring two students and two teachers from East School, and we have Becky Rundio and Lori Kowalki. Becky is a classroom teacher, and Lori is the school counselor there. And we also have joining us Tatum Brew and Dominic Ketcher. So if I could have you come up. Come up Lori. First of all, the teachers are being recognized for their significant efforts in going above and beyond with our Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program at East School. They've been kind of leading the way for our entire district, and they have extended into the other levels of PBIS. And these are two students that we have with us tonight who have been very successful with the program with the support of your teachers. Is that right? And so you've been great role models for others at the school, and we would like to give you these medallions of excellence, honors for excellence, for your hard work and efforts. We want you to keep up the good work. Can I shake your hand? Congratulations. And for you too, I think. And are you Dominic? No. Tatum. Okay. And Mr. Bilston, would you like to say anything?
I would. I'd like to recognize Dominic and Tatum for the work that they have done this year, especially to achieve their goals. They have gone, they've been the talk of the school. You guys don't know this, but the teachers are talking about you, all the support staff, for the great job you've been doing this year in your classroom and throughout our school, and we're very, very proud of how hard you've worked and how far you've come. You've done a super, super job, and we're recognizing that today. And it can't be done without, you know, great teaching, and they have Becky as their classroom teacher who provides them what they need. All of our students get whatever they need in that classroom, and that means great support and individualization. And Mrs. Kowalki leads our, she's one of our PBIS coaches, but she's also the person that organizes and leads our check-in, checkout pause club. And our pause club is something that both Tatum and Dominic have been a part of, and it's a systematic system, part of our PBIS, system of supports and interventions, and it really requires somebody that is working it every day, communicating with staff, students, and parents to make sure that it runs smoothly. So, we greatly appreciate your work on that.
In recognition of your efforts, here's a certificate of appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Becky. Is there anything that you would like to say?
Yes, I would. I've got a few things I would like to say if I could just take a few minutes of your time. I would really appreciate it. I want to tell you that teachers don't have favorites, and they might say they don't have favorites, but teachers do have students that they will always remember. Students who really touch their hearts, and I'll try to do this without emotion, but I'm a pretty emotional person, particularly when it comes to my students. I've really been blessed this year with two students that really have truly touched me. These two young men here. Tatum here is a really energetic young man, very bright, loves to be my classroom helper. Need anything, just ask Tatum. He'll be right there helping you out. His exuberance this year has caused him possibly to get into a little bit of trouble, but he's on our check-in, checkout system, and that system has been really, really important for Tatum. It's a component of our PBIS system. If you're not familiar with check-in, checkout, these students that need some extra support during the day to monitor their behavior, they carry a sheet of paper around, and the teachers can, you know, let them know throughout the day how they're doing. Tatum really likes having that positive feedback throughout the day, and he can self-correct as needed via that document. It's been very powerful. Tatum has set a goal for himself. He told me I will be off of that by the end of the year, and I have no doubt that he will achieve that goal. Last year, Tatum spent a lot of his time in the special education classroom. This year, he's 100% in our fourth grade classroom. He's successfully completing fourth grade level work. He started the year a little bit off task and bothersome to others at times. Those behaviors are now gone. So we are very proud of Tatum's efforts this year. You are to be commended. Congratulations. Awesome. This is Dominic, and Dominic is smart, sensitive, and full of joy. He has taught me to find joy in the simple things in life. For example, having a hot dog for lunch. His joy and radiance lights up any room in the morning when he comes in. It is just remarkable. When he first began fourth grade, he was a little bit unsure of the grade level work and the pace, if he'd be able to keep up with it. He had some frustrating moments. We put him on the check-in, checkout program. It was highly successful for Dominic. He was able to track during the day where he needed a little bit more support. His support person was Erin Verhagen, as well as myself. He would check in with her in the morning and at the end of the day, and talk about what went well, what he needed to work on a little bit. He had some self-coping strategies that we taught through that process, and now he starts to recognize when he's feeling frustrated, and he knows what to do to fix that right away. And Dominic, I'm happy to say, is a graduate of our check-in, checkout program. He astounded his whole class and myself when he got up to the class to talk about why he graduated and why he was successful. He told us it was the class's encouragement that helped him through the days, and that's what got him to be a graduate, and we were just overwhelmed. I cried most of that day, didn't I Dominic? I did. Yes, I did. He has matured a great deal, and I'm really proud of his efforts, and I appreciate that you're recognizing both of these young men here tonight. The secret to the success, it's simple. Number one, a classroom that is structured and safe. They know they can make mistakes, and I'll still be there to care about them and respect them. The second thing, it's adults. It's support. Lori Kowalki, Glenn Bilston, myself, Erin Verhagen, Ann Crane, Mrs. Tammy Bloom. Absolutely, these people are there every day, building them up, giving them positive feedback on what they can do well and how to make changes that are positive in their lives. So these are the components to the check-in, checkout program, and I really hope that that continues. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Becky.
Yeah?
I just want to say thank you so much, and Dominic, you may remember I used to substitute in your class for Mrs. Ginther, and you would bring me your sign in and sign out, and we would talk about what you did during the day that was so good, and we would sign you out. Congratulations. Just wanted to remind you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Continuous School Improvement, which brings us back to Mr. Bilston, and I don't know if you got a pretty good intro off of the presentation.
We could probably move on. Okay.
No, we can't.
I was asked to do a quick update, operative word there is quick, on our PBIS initiative in the district, and what I want to focus on is where the different buildings are at, for one thing, to make sure that we all kind of have a sense for the progress that's been being made throughout the district and the different buildings with the PBIS initiative. And then, just to show a little data too, and talk a little bit about the professional development. So, you know, just to start things out, to keep in mind that our strategic plan highlights developing tiers of interventions for academics and for behaviors, and that's where our PBIS comes in, committing to have all schools in some form of implementation of PBIS by the fall of 2012. We're well on the way, you know, that's already been accomplished, and we're moving well past that. And I just want to kind of show you what that looks like in the pyramid that you've probably seen before, that is often associated with RTI, and certainly with also PBIS. And I just put into this pyramid a snapshot of where the different buildings are with their training. Now, about a year ago, this was really easy to keep track of, but you know, this district has moved in so many positive directions with it that we have a lot of different needs, and we have, you know, a lot of different buildings that have different needs when it comes to their trainings. But all of our elementary buildings have completed the first tier of training, which is where we associate the universal tier, where we give all of our students certain supports and various things. Now I'll go into a few examples in a little while. But the exciting part about this is how our middle school has also completed the first tier of training of PBIS, and the high school started this winter, and they went to day one in December, and I believe are going to day two this month, and day three next month in February. So, we have completed tier one training this year, and Melissa and her team deserves a lot of credit for moving that forward so quickly. But we're also excited because many of our schools have at least started tier two training, and East and West and A have completed tier two training, and GLW and North Freedom are ready to start tier two training, and we're looking for those opportunities hopefully this spring. And then, middle school, I know that they're excited about that next level of training as well, and so we'll be looking ahead at finding them a place to get this training maybe in the summer or fall of next year, and the high school will follow. But we're all moving up this pyramid. It doesn't mean once we've completed a training that we're done with it, but we're really never going to be done with this. This image should really be circular in some ways because we're constantly and continually looking at our systems and our supports and our data to figure out what we need to do to make everything strong in the buildings. And eventually, we'll be ready for tier three at some of our schools, and maybe as soon as next fall for East School. There's been quite a bit of professional development going on. This is just a quick snapshot of some of the things that we've been doing in the district this year. Many of us went to a PBIS leadership conference last August, opportunities, I think, for most buildings to send some representatives to that. We continue to receive SWISS training as needed. SWISS is our school-wide information system that supports PBIS, so that's where our data comes in, and that's how we keep track of our success and where our weaknesses are. We have new teacher orientation at the beginning of the school year and an in-service presentation to our elementary staff and our middle school staff, and really that included our support staff as well. We continue to send our coaches to orientations and networking sessions, so because this is so dependent on coaching at the building level and leadership from teachers, they need to network, and they need to create opportunities to learn from other schools. Usually, before we take a team from tier one to tier two, there might be administrative overview to make sure that those schools are actually ready for that next tier of training. It's just not, you know, we feel like we're ready. You really should meet some data points, and there are different surveys that we can take through the PBIS framework that allows us to say, yes, as a school, we're ready for the next level based on meeting these standards. We're doing monthly building-level team meetings. Since this is such a continuous process, the key part of this, obviously, is that team that works together in a building, and each building has their own team, of course, and we're using that early release schedule during PLC, in many cases, to have our teams get together and meet. That's when they look at data, that's when they create, you know, whatever it is that needs to be created to be put in place for their students. Some of our schools have gone on onsite visits this year, especially at the secondary level, as they start to get out and learn more about other buildings and what they're doing. I know Melissa's working on that at the high school to set up some onsite visits for them, and the middle school as well. We've talked a little bit about the trainings, tier one and tier two trainings. Again, they're typically three-day trainings that the teams go to and work through the process. We have internal coaches in our buildings. Each school has one or two coaches that lead their teams, and those are called internal coaches, and we're meeting at least twice, at least twice a year in district, just to kind of share where we're at, to kind of huddle up and talk about success, challenges, and plan for the future, and those have been real beneficial. District Leadership Team Meeting is coming up next week. We're putting together a district leadership group that will represent all of our buildings, along with a board member. Peter's going to be a part of that, and people that will represent Department of Human Services and parents as well. And so, we know that PBIS is all school, it's all students, it's all staff, but in other ways, it's all community too. And so we know that there are ways for us to bring more people into the fold and to help us with planning for what our needs are in our buildings. PBIS Leadership Summit, another opportunity, which was last spring, we'll probably do that again this year, which helps us to sit down and talk about budgeting as we move forward and what our action plans should look like. I know that there are quite a few other ways that professional development has played out this year. In fact, I think we had some of our coaches from the middle school and the high school go to a conference in Chicago this year, and they were able to network with some of the middle school and high school coaches. And Illinois happens to be at the forefront of PBIS, so there was a lot there to learn. This document just goes into a little more detail about our professional development and our action plan this year. So, I thought I'd just share that with you in case you want to take a peek more at what some of this involves, and if you have questions, you can always see me. I just thought I'd throw that out there because sometimes you wonder, what are we doing at these tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three? And really, what we're doing is we're customizing it for every building. Every building, every team has different needs, and so they have to look at, while there might be similarities from building to building, there often is going to be some differences. And this just happens to reflect East School, since that was easy for me to put up here, but we put systems in place in each of these tiers that we know our kids need, and in this tier, it's all about what all kids should have and all kids should be exposed to, and make sure that it's put out there in a systematic way. It's hard to see, but the latest thing that we've been working on is bully prevention and putting a bully prevention curriculum in place at East School this month and through the first part of February, where all students are given instruction in bully prevention through a PBIS framework. So it folds right into that, and all staff is also in-service in it, so they know how to respond to students when there's a situation that is brought to them. And, you know, then reteaching it and finding ways to make sure that that gets folded into the life of the school as we move forward. You heard about check-in, checkout from Mrs. Rundio and the students that were here to be honored. Check-in, checkout is the first level of tier two. Sometimes it's considered a borderline tier one, tier two intervention, but what our teams are doing as they work through this PBIS framework is they're putting in levels of support. They become more individualized as you move up that triangle. And so you know, in this yellow tier, we're going to have 15% of our students or so that are going to need some individualized support, and we want to have those automatic, where when we see issues coming up that are universal, isn't addressing, that we automatically can put them into these steps, into these different interventions, and one at a time. So, again, we continually look at that and try to refine it, and it's not something that we really say will ever be done with, because there will always be better ways of doing it. Just taking a quick look at some data, again, just bringing up some things from East School because we've been collecting our data since 2009, 2010 school year, and this is what we've put into our school-wide information system called SWISS, and it's all connected through the University of Oregon to PBIS. So, we can dump the information in from our office discipline referrals and generate all kinds of different graphs and information about groups of students or individual students in our building. This just happens to be overall discipline referrals, because it's an easy one to look at, and the green reflects 2009, 2010, the blue reflects 2010, 2011, and the yellow reflects this year's. Basically, from 2009, 10 to 2010 and 11, we had about a 6 or 7% decrease in office discipline referrals. Now this year, we're fairly steady with where we were last year. But this is just one of many different ways we can disaggregate the information that we have, and it's really helpful. We can figure out where the office discipline referrals are coming from, when they're coming in, at what times. We can really look individually at students, and then we can also put in all the check-in, checkout information, all that data into the system and generate reports. So those slips that we were talking about earlier in the meeting that Dominic and Tatum carry, we put that information in at the end of the day, and that allows us to track how they're doing, and we can decide when they're ready to graduate, that sort of thing. I like this graph because that same data that I just showed you from the year, we can run a quick report out of SWISS, and what happens is it shows us what our office discipline referrals look like if you were to imagine it as a triangle. So, green represents all of those students in this line. From 2009, 2010 was zero or one referrals, and this was at the end of last year. 2010 and 2011 was zero to one. So, we know under RTI that typically about 80% of our students are going to respond to that universal tier of systems and supports that we put in for our students, both academically and behaviorally. And when you look at how all of that data ends up looking for a specific school, it sort of plays out that way. And what you want to see over time is an increase in the amount of green and a decrease in the amount of yellow and red. Yellow are reflecting, yellow is reflecting the students of two to five referrals, and the red is reflecting students of six or more referrals. This was the data from the end of 2010, 2011. So, that's another way of tracking some of the data and just a way to kind of look at how things are improving or not in your building. We will see how it looks at the end of this year, obviously. Questions so far? Peter?
I just want to reinforce for my colleagues as well as the school environment in general. The New York Times released a report last week connected to some of these kinds of strategies for increasing student achievement through paying attention to student behavior, which is what PBS, PBIS is. And this study tracked 2.5 million students over 20 years, so we have a tremendous longevity of looking at student achievement over what one might say as the beginning of a lifetime. Elementary and middle school teachers who help raise their students standardized test scores seem to have a wide-ranging, lasting positive effect on those students' lives beyond academics, including in behaviors, lower teenage pregnancy rates, greater college matriculation, and adult earnings. So, the investment here in our young people to help them develop self-discipline is not just something that helps them academically in their classes and increase standardized test scores, it helps them become better people in their lives, and that's what teachers do. Thank you, Glenn.
Well, we talk to our students a lot about that sort of thing in terms of, you know, when we talk about our cool tools in our buildings, this is really, really about what we need to do anywhere we're at, not just in our schools. It's how we want to handle ourselves when we leave school, when we walk home, and when we go to the library, or we go into the store, and all transfers to all these different environments, and I think students usually can connect to that. Well, I can't leave you without showing you a video, maybe a new video, a really quick Every school will do different things in order to teach and reinforce. There's so many different aspects of PBIS when these things are put into place. It's not one thing you do, it's a lot of different things that you do as you start to fold in different systems and supports in your buildings. And so, some of our schools, we have found success at our school to use videos to teach the expectations and the rules, and, you know, to build those videos around what our building needs at the time. Right now, we're in production with bully prevention videos, so we can show those at the beginning of the school day, real quick snapshot. The TVs are on, and it's two or three minutes, and those are quick reminders, and they're usually pretty engaging. We've also just completed one that has to do with snow forts and playing in the snow.
Always listen to adults and show them respect. Snow pants and boots are required to play in the snow.
When you are playing in the snow at school, the snow forts and snow creations are for everyone. No one can claim a fort.
Everyone can join in on the fun of building and playing in a fort.
The snow forts and other snow creations are to be shared by everyone, so you might find that they change from recess to recess.
No one should take snow from a fort or purposely wreck or destroy the fort or other snow creation.
Have fun playing on the snow hills, but remember to always slide feet first and never chase or play tag on the snow hills.
Unless you are building a snow fort or a local creation, the snow stays on the ground.
Taste snow only as it's falling.
Keep your tongue off of metal objects.
Always line up quickly and quietly when the bell rings at the end of the recess and respect the personal space of others.
I'll tell you, Glenn, I needed all the cool tools when I was a kid. I still need them.
Probably still do.
Well, you can see, we had one month where we had a real spike in our office discipline referrals, a month of February, and so it made us realize we need to do a lot more with playing in the snow. We have Joan Wheeler in our building, I believe we honored her here one time, and she really takes a lot of leadership with creating And she really takes a lot of leadership with creating these videos, making them fun and, you know, involving the students too. All these students are involved in it. That's my report. Any questions?
I just have one comment. I was in your building a couple of weeks ago observing writer's workshop. And I was very impressed with both the classrooms, but particularly the younger classroom that I was in. These students were engaged with an academic writing activity for half an hour. And they, these little kids were staying in their chairs the whole time. And Glenn happened to tell me that four of these kids at the beginning of the year were check in, check out kids. And I was just amazed at how well they were behaving. So it does impact us academically, plus behaviorally. So those are both important.
Piggybacking off what Glenn said about bullying prevention, the administrative team, our school counselors, and our school psychologists will be going through some inservicing on how to respond to those situations in schools next month. So we're looking forward to that training.
Glenn, I know that the SWISS program always seems to get introduced a little bit after, you know, or somewhere in that Tier One area, after PBIS is introduced to an environment. Is there any kind of data we can build at the middle school to sort of establish a baseline so we can see the fruits of the labor as the kids start coming up through the middle school that have been fully exposed through PBIS at all our elementary buildings?
They do have SWISS and they are, you know, using it to implement or as they implement PBIS. So I think, you know, over time, we'll be able to see and be able to share across some of the buildings some of the success. One of the things that is, you know, clearly true is we all might have a slightly different way of implementing our office discipline referrals, depending on what the team in the building decides or how they decide to handle it. But I think, you know, it'll be interesting to watch each building as they have the system in place for a period of time, you know, what their data starts to show then. It may be hard to compare schools.
Yeah, I think the research shows that it's less important about the specific intervention as much as it is that there is a, that it's a positive intervention. And when a child knows that they are being paid attention to and that the attention is positive attention, it doesn't matter if it's a sticker or a lollipop, just as a metaphor. I think the research shows that it has that kind of impact that we're looking for.
And it's important that it becomes systematic in the building. That's, again, what a check in, check out or some of the other Tier Two interventions do are really, you know, universal things too. You put the systems in place that are automatic so that everybody in the building just gets used to it. It's all school and all staff and really all students so that it becomes an automatic part of the, just the fabric of the school. So you are, it's working. You may make some changes, but it's not going to go away. It'll be sustained. All right, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled "Grading Timeline." I'd like to turn to Ms. Lori Miller for the grading change timeline discussion for the various levels.
And actually, we have Dave Schwartz and Kathy McRaeson here tonight to share the Silt timeline. We thought it would be important to have Silt members share with you the work that we've been doing. So, and they actually had an opportunity to share in front of the entire staff Friday. So truly thankful for them.
Okay, as far as Silt has been involved, my work and Kathy's work and a lot of other people's work, we've been working on ways to implement best practices in grading where we were looking at a couple of different things. First of all, we defined what best practices were. And then we're going to be using how we're going to format our grades or create the grades for students in the future where we're separating out formative and the summative assessments that they're going to be doing. And we want to separate them back. And a formative assessment for you guys would be feedback rather than scores. And summative is those big tests and exams on the units. Another part of our grading that we're looking at is the way we use zeros. In the past, we've used zeros as a 0%, and if a student got a 0% and a 100%, if you add those two together, they get a 50% and they're actually failing a course or failing a topic. And it's almost unrecoverable in many cases. And we've had a lot of discussion about how taking the worst-case scenario F and something that's recoverable. So instead of getting a zero for the F, what about a 50% or a 60%? Why not fail but not take the bottom of the failure? So that the kid has an opportunity to bring himself back up out of that rather than failing the entire course and having to start over. So us in middle school, we've been really working on trying to, if we're going to use zeros, the zeros are recoverable zeros. In other words, it's not something that's going to stick with them and they can get bounced back and actually perform fairly well. Because really, the ultimate goal of grading is to show that the student knows. It's not that they got in a fight with their parents the night before or their girlfriend broke up with them or they forgot their stuff at home and they end up with a zero and they can't make it up. As far as late work and retakes, I've always done this as far as re-dos, as we call it in middle school now, the retake policy. I've always done this in my math classroom is if someone didn't like the score that they got on the test, they certainly could do a few things extra and outside and beyond and then retake that to show me that they knew what they were doing. If they had a bad day or they made some calculation errors, you know, the second time around, if they showed me that they could do it, you know, I would readjust their grade accordingly. And I think a lot of the people in the middle school are starting to look at that and especially with standards-based grading where we want to let the kid know and the parents know what they can do and what they need to work on. So that's one way that their standards-based grading is going to come into effect. And we also definitely, if we're going to have a kid do a project or something that shows a concept that's necessary for their success in the future, we certainly want them to take it rather than just getting the zero and having the easy out and walking away. Closely tied to this is we're recreating our report cards to include a citizenship grade. And Kathy, I know the elementary's been doing that, so you can kind of add that a little bit.
For us, it's a little bit easier as far as elementary goes. I think, you know, back to what Dave said, we use some zeros. That's kind of, you know, more the upper elementary use more zeros and we're looking at using those less, doing kind of the same thing, allowing the kids to, you know, show us that they can get the work done. We've been doing re-dos, you know, for quite a while. And as far as citizenship goes, that's always been a part of the elementary report card. That's basically, we're going to hopefully link it to our PBIS, like Glenn was talking, being safe, being responsible, being respectful, you know. Getting, that's where like the homework will come into play is, you know, are they getting their homework done? Are they being responsible? Are they being respectful? And that'll be probably new for the middle school because they haven't been doing it. But at the elementary level, a lot of this, we've already been doing. When you look at the four-point scale, kindergarten through third grade has already been using the four-point scale. So really, it's fourth and fifth that have been using the A, B, C, D, F. So it should be probably a little easier transition for the elementary to move over to this because this is a lot of what elementary teachers have been doing.
And as far as the citizenship grade goes, we have a committee at the middle school that's working to create a new report card to have that in there. And I think a couple of things that they're looking at to include in that were the possible attitude and effort the students are putting in on their homework completion and attendance. So there will be some referral back to parents about whether their children are getting their homework done. But homework is kind of going to be eliminated a little bit from the overall grade. But there will still be, will be some response to the homework idea. And finally, we're moving into the standards-based report card with a four-point scale for next year, which will be a pretty much of a shift. And it's, I know Mr. MacDuffin, you kind of see what I'm trying to get to with the report card with your daughter. I've got the skills that, the standards that the kids are working toward and identifying how they're working out with a 4, 3, 2, 1, or a 0 on that. Where a 4 is something that the students have really mastered quite well. A 3 would be proficient. A 2 would be that they're working on it, working their way up towards the ladder, almost proficient at that skill. A 1 being the basic and a 0 being they're not making a lot of attempt at it. So we're working that way toward that. The problem that I find with this four-point scale and what I'm doing right now is I have to tag a percentage onto it. And my percentages always don't go well with my four-point scale. And I see sometimes my grades seem to be inflated at times and other times they seem to be lower than I expected. So I'm really trying to balance that percentage deal this year. And hopefully, when we go to this, you won't see the percent. You will see my child can add fractions. My child has trouble with mixed numbers and subtraction. And that's where the reporting will be out. Instead of, I got my child got a 94% in math. What does that mean, a 94%? Because that means 94% in my class could certainly mean 94%. In your class could be two different things. So we're just trying to have more of a standard to look at what we're doing. As far as the high school goes, they're defining best practices for 2012, 13, working on citizenship grade. And they're internally piloting the use of a four-point scale in several departments. So, are there any questions about the middle school, elementary, and particular things? Because we have a timeline about how this is all going to be put together.
Well, Dave, it sounds like you're doing it. Where is it? Is it the rest of the middle school or is everybody using this system at this point?
We're working on it. We're toying around with it. And I can speak about, see to the math department because I was kind of a pusher through this. And we're all, all the grade levels are kind of toying around with how the grades are going to lay out and how this standards-based grading system is going to be. I know that a lot of us are eliminating that unrecoverable zero and all of our math teachers are doing the retakes on all the major tests that we're giving and quizzes, so.
If I could just add, what Dave and Kathy are sharing is that for the fall of 2012, this is what we'd like to see put in place. But what we're doing this year is allowing the staff opportunity to learn more about best grading practices, define what that looks like in their content areas and at grade levels, and giving them an opportunity to experiment, play, we've used that term, so that they can get a sense for how this will work for them. So in some areas, the teachers are further along than others. But what we did on Friday was communicate. This is our plan for fall. We will want everyone to be in the same place by that time.
Okay, so some people or like maybe your class, the parent would get a report card that states they're making standard A, B, C, and D.
Well, if they looked at the Infinite Campus, what your, the report cards for my classroom would be just like all the report cards for everybody else. It'll be on a percentage basis.
Percentage, but they're not going to be able to, they're going to see 96% and that's a number.
Right.
But it doesn't really say why they're doing good or what they missed.
And then when parent-teacher conferences, parent-teacher conference comes around, I have a list of, I have my grade book and we go through each of the items that were graded.
Sure.
And we have that discussion where you can look on Infinite Campus and I have them each laid out along the top. And then there are the kids' scores and I have it separated out. Tests and quizzes are in one area, projects are in another. And I have a homework section, which is more of a completion or non-completion type scoring.
We had teachers like Dave and like Kathy ready to move full pace forward with this. But not all of our teachers were there and we felt that it would create a great deal of confusion for parents. And we really have, part of the plan that you'll see here is also the communication with parents that we haven't had a lot of in terms of the changes that we're going to implement for next year. So we have a large number of teachers ready to move forward. They'd love to be there right now, but they're working with their colleagues in the buildings to make sure that we can all get there by fall.
Okay, I understand. I mean, you know, I'd see one and then say, oh, I like this and how come I'm not seeing it over here? But, so I mean, everybody's trying to go to the standard-based grading. And so this is what the student will see or they're seeing this now in your class.
Yes, yeah, well, they're seeing this now in all sixth-grade math classes.
Okay, and then eventually the parent will get more transparency unless they go on Infinite Campus or go to the parent-teacher's conference, which they should go to anyway. And so they'll be able to see this. So everybody's going to know where Johnny or Mary's doing well or bad or whatever or where they need to work or where they're moving on.
And that's the hope, and that's the goal. And I guess when I look at it, I'm thinking that my report cards for the students that I'm dealing with are going to look a lot like the elementary report cards where you've got all these items.
Sure.
And it's outstanding, satisfactory, and needs improvement. And instead of that, it's going to be a 4, 3, 2, 1, or a 0.
Sure.
And those will all be reported out. And then we can start looking at, okay, where does this kid need the help and what help is this kid going to get?
The other important piece that ties in are the essential learning targets. And many of the departments are working on those this year. So it's hard to come up with a report card if you don't have those targets identified yet. And so that's one reason why, you know, Dave and the math department were ready to move forward. They had that piece pretty much in place.
Yeah, we're getting that. I mean, we've got the first semester, I think, though.
No pressure.
So work in progress. As with PBIS, we're moving toward a consistency from elementary through secondary, middle and secondary. We are being able to identify through standard, through standards-based evaluations and assessments where a child is excelling and where they don't need homework so that they can move higher into more challenging areas and where students are having difficulty with specific areas and where homework will become the exercise they need rather than some kind of punitive activity. The zero in my philosophy is the placeholder. It's, it doesn't have a value yet. It's, you have an opportunity to put a value there. And I think it's the move in exactly the direction we need to be going. And it must be done in a consistent basis over time. And I applaud our district administrator and our academic leader for moving us in that direction. I think that's a very, very profound and important movement for all of us.
Well, we have, a lot of this is being initiated in the building through our teacher leaders. So it's very exciting to see. You guys want to move on to the timeline?
Yeah, and speaking of that, we actually have a timeline that we can show you. And this was presented on Friday to the rest of the staff. And as you can see, January, February, we're going to continue to work on the essential learning targets. On Friday, I'm part of the math committee as well as Dave is. And we got together and we were able to look at, from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade, we talked about what are our learning targets? You know, what is something that's being really taught in fourth grade that, you know, you don't need to work on as much in third? And we really got to work with, you know, different grade levels. And I know you wanted to, you, being sixth, you wanted to go down to fifth and then you were even able to bring fourth in. And then we could keep going with that and just kind of being able to scope that out. So we'll continue to be meeting as the K-12 vertical teams. We have curriculum teams. We have, we're common core state standards is math and I'm on that committee. There is literacy. There is science and social studies, just met today for the first time. So we're getting committees together to just kind of look at the curriculum, look at what those essential learning targets are so that we can move forward with the report card. And then also in February, middle school and high school have conferences in February. Elementary has them in March, so you'll see it both areas. Parent-teacher conferences are going to be a frequently asked question sheet. That'll be our first contact with parents regarding what we are going to be telling them about our timeline and the four-point scale. And the administration will be scheduling the same sessions also for parents to come and ask questions and to hear about what we're doing. At that time, actually, what, February 1st, I think, is our meeting. The Silt team, School Improvement Leadership Team, will be actually defining the four-point scale for the rest of the district. We will be talking about that, talking about best grading practices, which we continue to talk about, but the four-point scale so that we can get that out district-wide is going to be a big accomplishment. And as you can see, in March, we will finalize the kindergarten through eighth grade essential learning targets because we need those for our report card committee. Again, March conferences are for elementary and we're going to focus on finalizing our citizenship at each level. More so probably for middle school than elementary. We'll just kind of, the elementary schools will be asked, you know, is there something we want to add or if we want to go in the PBIS direction? Kind of just finalize that. I did skip formally, you can help out one more. The professional development grading practices. There is a, Rick Formally, who was our speaker at the start of the school year with all the staff on best grading practices, is actually going to be... on best grading practices, is actually going to be in the Dolls on February 21st. And we have 18 teachers, nine from middle school, nine from the high school, who will be attending, and then bringing back those strategies to share on one of our PLC afternoons with other staff. And April and May, we'll continue with some parent, and actually probably with the board presentation regarding where we are as far as the timeline goes. Looking at doing some TV, doing some, getting some information on the websites. Just a little bit more communication, which I know is one of our strategic planning goals, is to have more communication. And then in May, they'll finalize the high school essential learning targets. And that is when the report card committee will design our standard-based report card.
Okay, and as far as, over the summer, we'll still continue with parent communication through registration. We'll be creating more forms of assessment rubrics. And finally, in the fall of 2012, elementary, middle school will be rolling into standard-based grading, where the high school will be starting that in the fall of 2013. So we'll be their kind of giddy picks of test things to see if we can iron things out. And as Laurie's been saying all along, this isn't going to be pretty right from the get-go. It's going to be messy. It's going to take a while to get it to the way we like it. And as long as we're all positive and keep moving forward, I think that things will go pretty well.
I have a question for Dave.
Yep.
A couple meetings ago, I think, was that somebody said, if you take a test the first time and you get, let's say, a 10, you take the second time, you get 100, then you count 100 as the score. Okay, I see in your deal up there that, are there any repercussions for late work? Or does not make any difference? If, I mean, if there aren't any repercussions for late work, why would a person worry about it? I guess I'm asking. What is the incentive to make these students do their homework?
The incentive would be not to have to spend lunch with me doing that?
I can understand that.
Spending school time after school doing that with me? Those are some incentives. You know, I'm going to do everything I can to get that kid to get in whatever he's got to get in. And I had a kid turn in a project today. That was due three months ago, two months ago. So, you know, you draw your line in the sand. And I said it has to be in to me by noon today, otherwise I, you know, that grade's got to stand because the grades are due at noon. So he got it to me. So I had to go back in. And of course, when I assessed it, there probably was a little bit less of an assessment, but there wasn't penalized a whole great deal. I needed that from him, so he could show me that he learned some of those activities that I was looking for. We always had kids wouldn't do stuff, and then, you know, this isn't going to cure that, I guess. There's always been that, you know, that penalty. And I guess it depends on how hard you want to make that penalty. I've heard some people say, well, if you don't do this, you've got these things to get done instead, when the list is longer and it's more difficult.
Well, and that should also be reflected in the citizenship grade.
Absolutely.
Because if there's an area of responsibility, that's where it should be, not tied into the child's academic report.
Well, I was thinking, if you took a test and you got a zero the first time and a hundred the second time, and you had late work, to be accountable, for the student to be accountable, instead of giving them any 100, could you give them a 95, for example? Is that possible?
Well, that certainly is possible, but then you're getting, you're confusing percentages meeting standard. And that's where I'm struggling right now. Because I wouldn't be giving hundreds. They'd be getting a 4, 3, 2, 1, or 0. Are they passive material or not? Okay, so they're not getting a percentage, in fact.
Dave, just to add, you know, a child learns to crawl, to stand, to pull up, to walk. These are the steps. Some child, some children do it very quickly, and they're walking. And other children take longer in each of those developmental phases. We don't punish the child who needs more time to develop and grasp the knowledge. We're here to create environments for them to ultimately walk. And I think that's what this program is really trying to do. We don't give them a 50% in walking. We give them, they've learned to crawl. They're learning to stand, 4, 3, 2, 1. We're moving away from punitive grading to standards-based assessments on where they are, what they've accomplished. It doesn't change the fact that some kids are going to say, I'm not interested. And that will appear in their citizenship grade. It'll appear in what I think Ed is saying in terms of holding them accountable.
But we also have to ask why that child's not engaged. Do we have a relevant curriculum?
And I believe this is where, you know, Dave is saying, I'm taking as a teacher responsibility for bringing that kid in over lunch. I'm calling their parents for meetings to say, how do we approach this as a team? I think those are the ways that we can help. But ultimately, I think Ed is trying to say also that, you know, students have certain responsibilities. I'm simply suggesting they will get there at some point, and our goal is to try to help them, not tear them down.
Yeah, I'm sorry I asked the question.
It's a good question, because many of our parents are going to ask the same question. And I think it is a good question, and we have to be prepared to be able to respond to it. Because where is the accountability? That's going to be asked.
In speaking to the accountability, what we know is that, you know, our past practice of giving a zero when students don't do the work or don't show their demonstration of learning doesn't really hold them accountable, because then they've moved on and they've never, you know, taken the time to go back and learn or do the work that we want them to do to show us that they know what they learned. So really, going back and reteaching them, giving them the opportunity to retake or redo is more holding them accountable than we have in the past, as we're making them come back and learn it.
How many retakes or redos are you giving them?
We will offer that. Well, actually, I shouldn't speak for the district without having that conversation with Silt, but I would anticipate that we would offer them as many opportunities as we can up until that grading point, like what Dave was sharing today at noon. Because at some point, we have to report out where students are. But I think our focus is on, we want the students to learn what we've determined is essential. And however long it takes to get them there, we'll work with them to get them there.
And I can understand your rationale, that if they get a zero on the first test, for example, whatever, 4, 3, 2, 1, whatever you want to call it, and they get 100 on the second test, and they have late work and all those things, that's accountability. Now, in the real world, there's going to be accountability. So you should teach them accountability, in my opinion, at a younger age. And if your goal, which I think it is, is to, which I have to agree, your goal is that they learn what you want to teach them. I understand that. But also, if they don't do their homework or your other exercises, there has to be some type of accountability there, like a little, not a 100, but a 99.9 or whatever you want to give them. But you have to teach them accountability before they get to the real world, because then you have accountability.
The grades aren't going to help, though, because they won't be there next year. It'll be 1, 2, 3, 4, so that'll have less meaning. And so the reporting that we do will be more about what do they know and what have they demonstrated that they know. So you're right, we do need to look at what other accountability measures do we have in place for those. Might be spending their lunch with Dave, and that might be the accountability piece.
I'd definitely work for it.
Some students like that.
Not at the middle, some will.
Well, you know, I think, again, we have to, when change is difficult, I think, and again, we have to look at where the accountability is. You know, if my student brings a 4 in the subject, that's good. But if they get a poor citizenship grade, as a parent, I'm going to ask, what happened here? And you didn't turn the work in, you were misbehaving in class. There certainly will be accountability in that form. So I don't think we're dismissing accountability. It's just taking a different form than what we've done in the past, so.
Well, and I think we're holding the kids more accountable, like a zero. It was like, oh, I didn't have to do it. You know, I don't have to do this homework. I can keep getting zeros and zeros. But we're saying, no, you're accountable for this work. You're going to get this work done, and you're going to show me that you know how to do it. And we're going to work in different ways to get that done. So the accountability is now, I guess, in my opinion, more, well, you know, you can't just push it aside. You're going to have to do it. You're going to have to show me that you are proficient in what I am teaching you. And if I have to teach it to you this way during my lunch hour, if I have to teach you this way during, you know, computer time, this is what I'm going to do.
I would also add, I would also add to that, that we have students who have leadership capabilities who do peer teaching. We're moving into a collaborative world, where it's not just having my answer, it's being able to work in teams to solve bigger problems, where each contributes a component, and there is value in terms of, you know, what is contributed. Accountability comes also in participating in that collaborative effort. I'm sure Sean can tell us stories from the business world, where you have the smartest person on deck, and that person is fired because they cannot work in a collaborative environment.
Great segue to the next topic. It is.
I would just encourage part of that accountability concept to involve student peers. I think that's a very powerful mechanism.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your leadership in the buildings.
Good job, Silk.
Sure you don't want to stay for work?
We want to collaborate on this.
Peter's getting warmed up outside.
Before we move to the next subject, I just...
I even brought my glasses.
So I can see back there now. In listening to all the conversation, I think it would have been very interesting to sit at a board meeting 20 years ago and have a discussion about accountability, because I wasn't sitting here, and I don't know what it was. But all I can tell you is if you look at our society as a whole, whatever they were trying to do didn't work. And accountability, you can teach it all you want in school. You can hammer it all you want in school. If you don't have any accountability at home or in the community, it doesn't matter. So whatever it is, we're going to try to make it different, I'm all for it. Because what we were doing ain't working. So with that...
I ruined the segue.
So with that...
We can get back to the segue.
Are we to the convention report?
Right. Doug and Laurie and I represented the district and attended the joint convention last week. And we wanted to just share out just a few highlights briefly. So I'll begin, and I'll start with what Peter said about the collaborative nature of learning. And for me, what the highlight of the state convention was, was visiting two charter schools within the Milwaukee Public School System. One was an elementary school, I think 98% Latino, right in the city. And the other one was a high school, kind of rough high school, but with a focus on science, technology, engineering, and math STEM through Project Lead the Way. And we got to go into the classrooms, visit with the kids, see the hands-on things that they were doing. It was fascinating at the elementary, because just as you said, Peter, you had kids putting their heads together, navigating through very complicated software to design rooms and buildings. And then on the perimeter of the room, they had areas where they could actually construct three-dimensional models of the structures that they were creating online. This happened to be a bilingual school as well. And we came away with very excited about the possibilities for our district and how we might serve a niche in certain students here within our school district. The quality of the teacher and the expertise that they have was, I think, you know, crucial to the success of the program. But the students were so engaged, they were so articulate, and mixed abilities in the classroom, all working together. So that was amazing. I'll let you guys share, so I don't repeat something that you might say.
No, I would just echo that. That was the most powerful moment of our entire time there. And felt very excited and yet frustrated, because I wanted to move faster for this district. I think that all of our kids deserve those type of learning opportunities. And I think about the future of those kids that we talked to that day. They're bilingual, they're ready for engineering school at such a young age. So I think all of our kids deserve that. And we need to think as a district, how can we provide those same opportunities and gateways for all of our kids? I might just highlight two other things that I attended. I attended a session by the Muskego-Norway District, and they highlighted their scorecard process. They look at their strategic plan, and they break their plan down into action steps, just like we do. But they have created a district scorecard using data specific to those action steps to monitor their progress on their plan. And then they have a scorecard per building. And so I took away a lot of ideas of how we could perhaps do the same here. And it really could be a great process lead into our data retrieves that we do in June. We also had the opportunity to see Will Richardson, who's a national speaker on 21st Century Skills. Again, some frustration, like we want more for our kids and opportunities for our kids to have access to technology and relevance in how we deliver our curriculum. And I think our conversations after listening to him, we would like to think about bringing someone who could share that message with our larger staff, because we do think Maribou is isolated from some of the great strategies that other districts are using with 21st Century Skills because of our location and our geographic...
And not just staff, but again, invite the community to be part of that discussion and to create that awareness within our community as well.
Yeah, and lastly, I just, it's fun to spend time with Doug. But it would be great if we could have more board members come in the future, because I think it's a great professional development opportunity, great place to network with other districts and learn from each other. So I hope in the future we'll see more of you there.
I'm not really a composite board member either.
They are different. You lost me when you said it's fun to spend time with...
Sorry. Yeah, I know, that is a flyer. Tuning you out right there. Well, I kind of have to do a double ditto on the highlight. It was visiting those two schools. Milwaukee has about a 70% graduation rate in this school, and there's no cherry picking with their students. They had a 96% graduation rate. And Peter, to go back to your word of collaboration, particularly in the elementary school, we were observing teams of students working together, from a top-level student to kids who maybe were struggling a little bit. But they were working together, and they had skill building, that these students were working together on these projects. And it was impressive, because every one of those students was engaged that I saw in that room. And, you know, again, this has been the fourth convention I've gone to. And, you know, even in four years, the discussions have changed dramatically. It is so much about 21st century learning and skills, development, not just technology, but in how we approach an education. And so yes, I certainly hope that more of my board members will go, because there is certainly a lot to see in the outside world. The delegate assembly was differed in that every one of the resolutions passed. And there was a lot of discussion back and forth, but in the end, there's a lot of things that we aren't necessarily happy with, the direction that the state is going. And so we passed every one of them, and that's not, that's the first time that's happened for me. So I enjoyed it. I did enjoy being with Laurie and Crystal, but I would also enjoy other board members to go too, so.
Did you say that charter school had a 96% graduation rate?
That's what they told us.
At the high school.
Yeah, at the high school.
And then I suppose the public schools in Milwaukee surely don't have a 96% graduation rate?
No.
No.
So does that mean that the charter schools are more, a lot more effective? Or more...
This one, yes.
Yeah, this particular one, because I believe, because it's such a heavy focus on career and technical education, they set up a career pathway for students. So the likelihood of those students truly sticking it out and graduating, I think, is higher.
Then do they take the same subjects a person in a normal high school would?
I would think in some instances, they were taking more rigorous courses.
They do. They just have less electives, because it's filled with that technical education component.
So then what you're saying, if you have fewer electives, maybe we as a public school should have fewer electives and more rigorous...
I think it's important, well, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I think it's important to have multiple pathways for students, because some students... I think it's important to have multiple pathways for students because some students, that's a good fit. But for other students, you know, maybe a world language is a better fit. And so it's important to have those different avenues for students because we're a traditional high school. What we saw was not a traditional high school.
You can have a charter school though, within a school. So you can meet a certain segment.
To fit a niche.
And, and we did attend a regular session by DPI in several school districts about charter schools in general and what works and what doesn't and all the regulations and all of that. It's been a few years since we've heard that information. So we're trying to tie those pieces together.
So would it be advantageous, advantageous for Baraboo School District to take these certain students and have like a charter school within the Baraboo High School? Would that make sense?
Well, we could do that. That, you know, we, we looked at that, but we also looked at how powerful it was to start kids at the elementary and to continue to expand that programming and that career path for them very early on. Because it was amazing. I think the class that we were looking at were fourth graders.
And the career path, the career path you're discussing was one that was toward technical engineering. You could have a career path toward art and writing, literature. You could have a career path toward multiple arenas. Any child can learn anything if it's something they're interested in, if you have their core interest.
And we, we have an interest in looking at STEM because we have some research that was shared again that day by both Milwaukee Public Schools, but also by Will Richardson, that we have a need in that field of STEM as we look at what's available for jobs for our future, for students. That's probably a good niche for us to be focusing on for our students, to give them that gateway to earning income.
I would suggest that's one of them.
Yeah. Well, absolutely. Yep.
I think Steven Spielberg and others have demonstrated, you know.
What a great job.
Having a vision, having a vision.
Yes.
One vision, one vision at a time.
My dream is to see a redefinition of traditional education of pods of interest where students are drawn by their own choice and curriculum is standard and taught, but it's taught through the lens of the interest of the child. You can teach a skateboarder physics.
Is, is that on tonight's agenda?
I think it's a wide-ranging agenda.
Well, again, Peter, next year when you go to the state convention, you can hear Will Richardson.
Yeah.
And he talked exactly about that, about a student whose interest was in film. And he was able to reach out to people all around the world. And actually, I watched one of his videos today and I was, my jaw dropped when I watched this, at the professionalism of this high school student and, and what he's produced through the interactions that he has made. So, and what he was interested in.
Okay.
Well, the three of you have the rest of the board's utmost thanks for attending in Milwaukee and reporting back to us. And I'm sure that Doug will start campaigning for the convention next year to get other board members to go. Thank you for the report.
I'm with Doug.
Brings us to the portion of the consent agenda. For that, I will turn to Chair of Finance, Mr. McNeven, for the approval of the December receipts and discursments.
We met and we moved over to the floor.
I will second that.
Motion by McNeven, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion and approval carries, brings us to personnel recommendations. In your board packet, you had presented to you the forthcoming resignation of Julie Cushman from the North Freedom Principal position. I would entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
So moves. Second.
Motion by Mortimer, seconded by Borkenhagen. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion and acceptance of the resignation carries. Brings us to, seeing as how there are no new hires at this point, brings us to the approval of postings. And the first one up is for the position at North Freedom, which is redefine. And there has been explanation included in your packet. I don't know if, Dr. Ritz and Teller, if you want to expand upon that.
Well, as you know, Julie's position was .5 North Freedom Principal and .5 GT Coordinator. We happen to have an administrator in our ranks here with a great deal of experience with gifted and talented. So it would be our recommendation that Lori facilitate that process next year. And we would combine the reading specialist, North Freedom Principal position, and that would actually reduce a position by one FTE in the district. And we feel that that's, that's a manageable assignment and, and one that would, would go well together.
Nertina, motion to approve the posting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Cummings. Any further discussion?
Is there any concern that this is going to be a, like a union position?
For gifted and talented. She'll do the gifted and talented.
And the principal of North Freedom.
No, 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 we're going to post for it. We'll post for the position. Kevin Vodak as a North Freedom, former North Freedom parent and resident has volunteered to be part of that interview process.
Short list.
Good, goodie.
I'm sorry, Lori, what was your question?
There's no concern that this is going to be an administrative and supposedly a union position put together?
There's been a long history, especially at North Freedom School, of having a combined teaching principal role. This would just look a little bit different instead of a classroom teacher, part-time and part-time principal, it would be the reading specialist role. So the person would have an administrative contract, but would assume those additional duties.
We've had as many as two in our district in the past.
And part of the reading specialist performs in some ways an evaluative role of, of the teachers. And so that would just be an extension of her role as principal.
Well, that person is primarily in a coaching role.
Yes. But so is her principal.
We hope.
Yes.
She'd be a nine-year-old person then.
Yes.
I move to approve the posting. Second.
We already had a motion.
We had a motion by Mearing and a seconded by Cummings. So there is no discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. And it's well-studied right now, no, Lori's not going to be the principal.
No, thank you, Kevin.
Takes one off the list.
Brings us to the recommendation for the approval of a posting for a network technician. You were provided background from Mr. Pelland, also a brief intro at last month's board meeting. He is here. If the board has any further questions, through the packet that was provided, it's a four, recommendation for posting for a four-hour-a-day position at 20, 20 hours a week for 45 weeks. Turn it over to you if you want to.
I'd just like to show you, what I, what I'd like to do is, because I can sit and talk about facts and data and really how it's stacked up and how our, our team takes care of and handles a lot of things. But what I'd like to show you, and I totally just changed up what I wanted to talk about today. But I think it's important that you get to see kind of where the rubber meets the road with things. And just quickly, just to talk about support and things like that, because I don't know how people really think, like some stuff just works. It just works, okay? Like this program just works. This year, this is like 40 devices connected to the wireless network. This is all, all these different tools and resources. It just works, okay? And this professional development opportunity, this is our support. This is what we do. And this is what we take a lot of pride in. I'm just going to forward through, this here, oh, sorry. This here shows how we started with Google Docs and now look how many docs we've built. We started at 2,000, up to 12,000 docs. This is what we support. This is what we put in place. This is what we do. This is what we build as a technology department. It's huge. And I'm just going to forward, and we talked about this before, this is not even, we organized all this putting in place and the maintenance department does a great job with it. I'm quickly going through here. This looks real simple, but when it comes down to it, there's a lot that goes into. This is how we support things, Mike and I and the rest of our team. This is kind of what the classrooms look like. I know you saw that. Couple of things that I'd like even to show here, again, audio, video. These students are communicating with their teacher via email address right there, okay? This is like fourth grade kids at GLW that are working on this stuff. This is what technology does. This is what we support. And again, this is integration in the classroom, how we tennis this classroom. And, and nobody ever thinks of this stuff too. This is a heat map of all the wireless access points in the building. We're looking at expanding this, growing this, making this more robust so we can add 600 more devices if we need to do it, to this, to grow this. So you can see, this is the stuff we're analyzing and supporting and, and moving with. This is just one of our other buildings. And we're looking to add right here. We gotta add more, we, we're, we're missing some, some area there. And again, this is where kids benefit, right? Talk about the change of the classroom, okay? This is definitely what it, what it could look like absolutely for everybody, for this room included. And these are 4K kids that are using iPads, okay? And using those resources effectively, learning their alphabet. The little muncher guy right there. Free, it's a free app. It's a great application, students love it. And again, this is just kids using wireless access and we've seen some of these pictures before. But again, fluency practice, okay? On iPods in the classroom, completely wireless to their specific devices. And this is really pretty neat too, and nobody thinks about this, but this Mike set this whole thing up. This is middle school kids reading a book to kindergartners from our middle school over to our, to our kindergarten, okay?
The middle school has wrote.
The middle school has wrote the book, we're wired, we're totally going across our network to our kindergarten. We have to set this whole thing up, this is what we support. Mike did, was a big part of this whole piece. Kids are excited about being part of that. I love it. It tells a story. Now this girl right here is asking this kiddo a question at the middle school about his book. It's exciting to see that. Again, this is a high school student reading a book to a kindergartner. And you can see him here, this is what the kindergartners are seeing on the other end. This is the class interacting. Here's the class of kindergartners. Okay, and Mike set this one up too, right? Mike pretty much, Mike does a great job, he's a wonderful tech. And, and this is, we're interacting with somebody in Ghana, Africa, asking them questions. Again, this is all set up. Stuff we support here, that's our team. Okay, a handsome bunch of guys. Finally, I'll pull up, I just wanted to quickly, before we get into kind of nuts and bolts, I want to go fast. But I think it's really important that you can see the kinds of things that are going on here. I had one more picture just for you, Belinda, here, so, that I think is really telling. Because I think it's absolutely, and this here is Vic Glenn's school. Okay, this is the East Elementary School. What I love about this picture is we had spent a lot of time setting this up. There's a lot of energy put into this, so it just works. And granted, we have great people that take over and roll with this stuff, but look at this kiddo, he's the producer. She's helping with this. There's a weather person over here, they're doing, and this person's the cameraman. It's a great, it's a great picture of how technology, which is the camera, computers, all those other things, kind of work side by side. And obviously, our support is a big part of helping move those initiatives forward. So with that being said, now we can kind of talk about the nuts and bolts of some of the position. And I am asking for a .5 FTE position. And I'll pull up another, so as you can see, there's a lot of, I think, really exciting things going on in the school district here. And you saw a little video highlight last week with the different things we had going on. And really, support is a cornerstone piece of successful technology program. If you cannot provide timely support for the technology needs, the technology will fail at any level. I guarantee you, it will fail. So with that being said, what we're asking for is another .5 FTE to be able to continually provide support for the needs of our school district. And I handed out a little sheet here, I could pull it up there, and it has a little, has a graph in there that talks, or a little table there that talks specifically about, I'll pull it up here.
I think a key piece is the, the roles of the technology department staff have evolved over time. And Matt came to us as an instructional technology person. And so it's really important that he has the time to be able to be in the classrooms and help teachers with the actual integration of the technology, all the professional development components. And you know, as an administrative team, we rely on him a great deal too.
That's fine.
We need that support.
It is. It's wonderful to see all these devices just working. It's something like, for me, it just tells a story of the support that we provide because it needs to be transparent. It needs to work all the time. Same with the classroom. It just needs to work. So it's super important, but you can see here from this data that we started off when I first arrived here a while ago, almost five years ago, we had 1,257 devices. We've almost, well, almost doubled the amount of devices we're supporting specifically on this network. And we haven't added a single person to our, our department here. And does anybody have any questions about this specific graph right here and what that represents?
Go for the close.
Yeah, let's talk about, my question is, is this enough? Because one of the things that you've glossed over so quickly is the amount of technical education that needs to go on, the professional development for all these devices. We have seven new areas of technology that we're pushing into. And the critical success, not only does it just need to work, but somebody has to teach me how to use it.
Right.
You can give people the best tools, you can give them the best software, but if you aren't constantly teaching them better ways to use it, even though I learned AutoCAD four years ago, if I don't take a new class, it just, the amount of use I get out of it is what I learned four years ago. And it is so much more than that. And all of these devices and all of the software, and, and you, you didn't bring up Infinite Campus and you didn't bring up converting over our entire general ledger and payroll systems. My question keeps coming back to, is this enough? You have five people trying to do this. If everything about this district is 21st century learning, none of that takes place without 21st century education. We have to be, you guys have to be the department that helps push and helps educate and train. And I don't see how five does that effectively when the amount of technology is growing exponentially. The devices are growing exponentially, but our, but our support isn't.
Remember, we have tech, remember, we have tech coaches in each of our buildings and the role of our media specialists have, has also changed. I think.
But, but it's, but a tech coach in a building, it's somebody to get a printer to work and somebody to make sure that, you know, the, the smart board gets, you know, calibrated or can figure out how to get a program to run on the smart board, is a lot different than the IT department. And I just think, you know, adding .5, fine, I support adding a half a position. I support adding more than that, is what I'm trying to say. You know, do we find the right candidate that can give you even greater support and let people do more by giving them a full-time position? Do we find that right person? Now, how do we do it with one? Yet alone half?
Right. Well, half is certainly going to be sufficient at this point in time to meet our needs specifically right now. But yeah, again, it's, it's growing exponentially what we're asked to do. And for me, what I spend a lot of time doing is fixing AV equipment and fixing iPads and things like the iOS devices and things like that. And not, and I still spend a lot of time doing professional development, I do a lot of it. But then I spend a lot of time after hours kind of knocking that stuff out. So certainly, the support is needed to hopefully alleviate so I can provide better professional development for our staff. I totally agree with you. Again, we sat down as a team and defined kind of our needs. And our real needs are a specific second-level support person. And I think if we can knock out a halftime person at this point in time, it's really going to tighten down the screws of how we really can alleviate some burden and then ultimately provide better support for our staff, students.
I, I hear Sean saying, and I would agree, we, we support your immediate need. I think what we want to do is we, we want, we want to release you as the, as the technology instructor.
Sure.
To create a plan, which you have done, for how to go beyond taking care of equipment that, and make sure it runs. I think as Sean said.
Operational, sure.
The operational stuff versus the strategic stuff. The operational stuff versus the strategic stuff. We want you involved in, more in the strategic stuff. And if getting a .5 person will help release you, then I'm all in favor of that.
I'll go to approve.
I have a question. Well, sir, I assume that this district is going to get probably less than a million dollars or less back from the state next year. We've got over a million dollars, we pared that wall at the middle school. And this half-time position, no doubt, within a year is going to be a full-time position. Pretty soon, we're going to run out of money. Now, you folks apparently are doing a great job, and you're taking care of it now. You know? I hear what you're saying, but we just can't keep hiring personnel when we're going to keep losing money. And with all the, with all the maintenance on the buildings.
I think we have to constantly, you know, evaluate our priorities, and the district has made a commitment to 21st century learning. We just gave you an example of where we looked at a position where we were able to reduce one FTE. And I think we're going to continue to do that. We're going to look at the relevancy of some of the programs that we're offering and whether or not there's a need for them anymore. So as we come forward, maybe with identifying new needs, we're still going to be coming forward and saying, you know, this isn't a priority for us anymore. So it is really hard, it's a balancing act, but I do believe that this department needs more support and that this is a priority. And, you know, that's how we've weighed this as an administrative team too.
I think we had a motion by Mr. McNeven, Mr. Bedro, was your motion a second? So if there's any further discussion, we can continue.
Is this coming out of your regular budget already, or is this person starting within a month or something? Or is it going to be the new budget year?
As soon as possible, you want somebody working?
Yeah. I guess I don't have a problem with that, and I totally agree that it's probably a cornerstone of any school. But I guess I got to kind of lean towards... But now, is that halftime that we're losing because of the resignation, is, would that pay for this? So there is a...
That's not effective, that is not until next school year. This particular hire is effective as soon as possible. So you're going to be looking at the request for the 45 weeks is going to be, obviously, less than that, say 20 weeks or 22 weeks for this school year, looking forward to next year for 45 weeks.
I can tell you that the savings next year will be approximately between $65,000 and $70,000 for combining that position at North Freedom, as well as reducing one benefit package.
You know, one of the things, and again, technology just moving so fast. I mean, it's incredible, 2007 to today. I mean, we were looking at a list of looking at netbooks, iPods, iPads, just a few smartboards, cellphones, wireless access points. None of those were on the list when we, or smartboards were there, but just in a very huge classrooms. And so things are moving very quickly. But then, you know, I'm reading stuff today about someplace where there's a device that you can buy now for about a hundred dollars. And so as we're moving forward, obviously, that's part of the IT department, or our department, is to not only give the professional development, which is critical for what we need to do, but also to look at other things that we can utilize. I mean, just because it's an iPad, I mean, that device is going down in price, and other things are going down in price. So that's what we need to have that department do, but we need to have the people in place in order to make those decisions, to put the right devices and the professional development. I heard on a webinar where they said they felt that 30% of the cost of the department of technology was in professional development. And so that's obviously where we feel we need to go, but we need to be able to have the people in place for that. So I'm in favor of this resolution.
Any further discussion?
And I'm not saying I'm not in favor of it, I think it's very important as well, but I would like to see it been in a budget or something already sitting there, so we... Money's got to be coming from somewhere to pay for this, off the bat. If it was already budgeted, I'd say hire a full-time. But you're robbing something to pay for something else.
Matt, your assessment of this position was at $18 an hour for X numbers of...
It was for 200.
I'm just saying, I mean, if we look at just it from here to the end of the year, it's not even a full-time, it's something like eight or nine...
About 75 days.
It's about $7,000, $8,000 or something for the full-time position you had calculated, $16,000 a year or something.
Do you see benefits for this too?
I don't think so.
Be pro, well, it would depend, we'd have to talk about that. But if there would be, it'd be prorated .5.
Those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion, notice the nays from Mr. Borkenhagen and Mr. Mortimer. Motion passes, five votes to two. Brings us to the portion of the agenda, and Matt, by the way, thank you for your presentation, and please update us on your candidates moving forward. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled "Approval of Long-Term Substitute Positions." Making sure you have the revised agenda, which had the second position on it. The first request is for the approval of a long-term substitute for Gloria, the hiring of Gloria Carlson for the North Freedom kindergarten position. And the second is the addition of Jane Ellis for the Albeerman Elementary kindergarten position. I entertain a motion for those approval of long-term substitute positions.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Borkenhagen, seconded by Bedro, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled "New Business." I want to make sure that everybody received an updated email in regards to the CISA service contract. We had a version previous that was lacking line number seven or item number seven, did not have any monetary value placed with it. But that is for delivery service, and that additional monies that is not on the original contract was for $1,492. So as we're discussing moving forward, the CISA contract, please keep that $1,492 figure for item number seven in the discussion. Having had the ability to preview the contract, I entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
Second.
Who was the original? Sean?
Gray.
Gray? Motion by Borkenhagen, seconded by Cummings, discussion? I have two quick questions. One is on line 35, which is the Sauk County Juvenile Consortium.
That's the SCAN program.
Correct. I want to clarify that that is for services as utilized, correct?
Correct.
So this is not contracting and sending a check for services that we may not use?
It's budgeted.
Correct, budgeted. That also holds true for line number 40?
Any of the special ed services are based on either current enrollments or enrollments in September.
The membership fee is regardless?
Correct.
Okay.
One student, one day.
Okay, so line 40 is what it is. Line 35 could be different from what it shows on...
As well as other special ed costs. In fact, our visually, our visual services may actually increase as we do have a blind student who may need services outside of the district. All of that is dictated by the IEPs.
I just brought that up from the standpoint that there's been some discussion about moving forward what our services for our district students might be in regards to the consortium. So I just wanted to make sure that was understood, that that can change, that's all. Anybody else have any other questions?
Could you put a copy of that in my box? I don't, I didn't get it.
Didn't get it?
I'm going to pick it up, mail it up. Thank you.
I also indicated that we may be coming back with a request for the career and technical ed component. We may have a teacher retiring at the end of the year, which I believe is the only teacher in our district with that licensure to be able to coordinate that local vocational education piece. So if and when that happens, I'll come back to the board.
Hearing no further discussion, those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, contract with CISA thus is approved. Brings us to under "New Business," which is the approval of storage lease. I will turn to Chair of Finance, that was a finance committee discussion, so Mr. McNeven.
I wasn't prepared to talk about that, but we can wing it a little bit. It is, the finance committee met and reviewed and approved, is recommending for approval, a lease with Dave Deppi, he's got some space available in the Teal Building that's over on, not Water, but Lake Street. I know, something like that. And about 1,250 square feet, $390 a month. It's based on the fact that we've reduced and reused and recycled everything out of the building that we possibly can out of Fairfield, and we're down to about 1,250 square feet. That should even be less, once we get the simulators hooked up and out of there. But it's a minimal storage need to get us through till July, and then we'll assess our needs at that time.
We also plan to have our students build two small storage structures at GLW and North Freedom.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion by McNeven, seconded by Mr. Cummings for the approval of a lease for storage with Deppi Enterprises?
I think so, yeah.
For $390 per month, and the original expectation would be through the end of June?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion further? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried for the approval of the lease. Brings us to capital maintenance discussion. This can turn to a number of different committees or a number of different kickstarts to the conversation, so I don't know, I know there was discussion at Finance Committee tonight in regards to some of the capital maintenance projects that were underway currently and those that are coming in the future. So I'll turn again to Mr. McNeven at Finance to start the conversation.
I did ask for this item to be put on the agenda. I guess it's floated around between Finance and BGT and even full board discussions. I guess I'd like to continue those discussions in an open format and see where we're at. Finance needs to start planning for next year to see resources that need to be allocated in next year's budget. What is the size and scope of it? And I heard numbers that came out of BGT of up to a million and a half dollars for the wall of the middle school in two-year process. Well, you can't take our budget and find a million and a half dollars to just start fixing brick and mortar at one school. Also, I look at our laundry list of needs and they continue to grow. Our roof repairs, we're trying to keep up, but we're not making a lot of progress, they're aging. You look at our parking lots, they're, some of them are turning to rubble. GLW is basically down to rubble when you look at it. The high school parking lot isn't far behind. These are things that really need to take a look at.
Carpet?
We have flooring, we have flooring issues at all of our schools. GLW looks like, the color's duct tape, is the color of the flooring in some of our buildings. If you look at the middle school, the carpet in the auditorium is original, correct? You know, it's a tripping...
Color's coming back, by the way.
But the point I'm trying to make is, we've got a substantial list of needs, and we have to get on top of these, especially things like roofs, walls, and parking lots. Because you see what happens when you let them go, and flooring, when you let it go, it becomes even more costly to replace than it does to maintain. I kind of think that one of the obligation of any board members to make sure that whenever you get off of the board, you've left the facilities in better condition than when you got on the board. I'm up for reelection, so I want to see that happen the next few months. No, but I chose to stay. So you've got three months to fix everything before I... But I just would like to see a greater sense of urgency and a greater level of commitment. And so I'm looking for the board and BGT to come up with that updated list again and say, this is the size and scope of stuff that needs to happen now.
By the next meeting, we should have the figures from mid-states for the middle school project too, so we'll have a better handle on that.
Right, other than the middle school wall, also there's some fairly solid designs and numbers coming up for the track too at the same time, so that should be, it's all rolling through them. They're two big things on the plate right now.
You know, and again, I'm not on BGT and Finance, so maybe I'm not a numbers guy, but I'd like to think that we all have that responsibility when we're on the board and as community members to keep the facilities maintained. There was a plan, a 2008, 2013 facilities, five-year plan. There's a lot of things that were on that list, a lot of dollars, a lot of roofs, a lot of carpets, a lot of rubble, parking lots, and not just at GLW, but other places too. So we're not just picking on GLW. But, you know, we really have to have a plan, I think, to look where we're going, not next year, but the year after, and the year after, beyond that.
Well, we've got the plans in place, you've got the laundry list, you've got the review, we've got the basic specs. What we need is the commitment to get it done.
Yes.
And look at the admin billing alone. There's a plethora of things that need to be cured. I mean, we pull out and fix one window, I mean, all those windows need to be pulled out and replaced. You've got crown molding that's on top of the building that's starting to rot. You've got foundation problems, you've got mechanical issues. You know, we're addressing them piecemeal, but some of these things need to be done in less than a piecemeal fashion. They need to be done in the whole pie. And we need to get them and start checking them off the list. It's great that we're taking one wall at a time at the middle school, but I'm sick and tired of talking about leaking walls at the middle school and how we have to rip them down, brick by brick, and then back up, and do it out of a budget. We don't have these kind of finances to pull out of our budget to keep doing this. Every, if it takes a million and a half dollars, guesstimate, mine, but I've heard the number thrown a while, if it takes a million and a half dollars out of our budget, it's going to chew up so much of the things that we need to fix, like parking lots and flooring and roofing and whatever else may be. They're just big numbers. I think we need to lay out exactly how big they are and start making the commitment to getting them done.
How are you going to, can you have, who would you have come up with the priorities? Should you have the, like Molly and Ruder and whomever at these schools come up with a list, and then we'd have to look at it and see what's most important?
Most of them are already done, the five-year plan, they're prioritized up and down the line. Their problem has been having is these emergencies, like this unforeseen thing in the wall up there. It's coming up, it's eating a chunk out of even our modest maintenance budget.
Just even the structural, I think when we have MSA put the numbers together, update our five-year plan, give us current numbers on the structural stuff, like ceilings, floors, walls, parking lots, and mechanicals, and say, where are we at? That's going to be a big enough number that we're not going to have to worry about the small repairs and maintenance we're taking care of, and we're doing a pretty good job of it. I mean, you go into the, you go into the school buildings and they're well, they're maintained, they're clean, they're updated. I mean, they're nice, but we're falling behind on the big stuff.
But I've got a copy of five-year plan too, so in 2012, we can't fix everything in 2012 that's on the list. So then aren't we going to have to prioritize that?
Yeah.
Well, we have things on the list that, even prior to that, that haven't been completed.
Oh, no, I believe that we're, yeah, we have 2012, but again, we've been just like nicking off a project here, a project there, where there are other projects. And again, as we move along, what may have cost a half a million dollars, maybe a million and a half, once things start to deteriorate. And so we have to get to the point of being proactive, not reactive, to the situations that are occurring with our buildings and...
Well, I mean, it seems to me that we're talking about money. You know, we have the plan, and we have the priorities, and we don't have the money. And the state is cutting 10% more out of their allocations. So where are we going to get the money? Where to make up for the reductions? We have to turn to our community, who has said, in certain ways, we don't want to spend the money. So when we talk about being proactive, it's, it doesn't do, it does no good to arrange deck chairs on the...
deck chairs on the Titanic. You gotta go where the money is and demand that money.
And I appreciate that. And all I would like to do is make it a priority of the board to update our capital needs plan. We've got one that was done for the 2008 through 2013. What I would like to do is, is spend a little money with MSA, cross off the items that we got accomplished, add to the items that we know that are coming that weren't on the original list, and also then start prioritizing. Have them say, look, structurally, this is what needs to happen first. Sorry, Molly, don't worry about fixing that parking lot because there's no sense fixing it because putting money into patching that parking lot won't work.
I agree.
Patching at the high school might work.
Can I take, can I entertain that as a motion, Mr. McNeven?
Sure. I so move...
Update the list and, and include the estimated costs.
I'll second that. Further discussion?
Did that include everything, Sean?
Well, and I, I guess I'd like to have him come back and do a presentation to, to the full board. Because it gives the community an opportunity to hear this, it gets it into the record. Somebody can watch it at home and, and listen to what MSA has to say about the condition of our facilities. And we can hear it firsthand, rather than a 30-page report, we can get that feedback.
I'd like to mention this here now, like previous large maintenance projects, building projects and what have you. This is a pretty good chunk we're working on here this, this year of the wall here. But in the previous ones, years before, there was actually like borms and/or a referendum, whatever, for maintenance, like the middle school, what have you. And we're, we got one paid off and the other one gets done, what, next year? One of them was for retirement fund, but a lot of it was for maintenance for roofs. Now that, Jim can refresh me on this one. That last time was, was a million and a half for roofs and that, how long ago was that?
That was quite a while ago.
That and a million and a half, the back of them dollars is quite a sizable thing here. So what Sean's trying to get at here and stuff like this, this stuff here, we can't nickel and dime it. We're going to have to probably borrow money. Get this stuff done and then pay that back year, 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 little bit at a time to get it done. Because otherwise, you're going to, if you don't take care of it, just crumbling the infrastructure costs you more if you don't take care of it. You got, you got to take care of it, otherwise it's going to, you know, go to, go to hell so much faster, you can't even keep up with it.
So I would appreciate the support on that motion.
Oh, I think you've garnered the support on that motion. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. One clarification, do you want MSA to report back directly to the board or to BGNT or what's your...
I'd like the full board and I'd like it in front of, you know, the general public so they can see it on the television or read it in the minutes.
Good.
Attend the meeting.
Probably six weeks.
Two weeks would be great.
Okay.
For, it's a conference.
At this point of the meeting, I would entertain a motion...
I move to go to close session.
...be resolved to go executive close session. According to the statutes printed in the notes.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Borkenhagen, is there a second? Roll call. Borkenhagen.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
McNeven.
Aye.
Mearing.
Aye.
Mortimer.
Aye.
Bedro.
Aye.
Sodak.
Aye.
Five minutes.